I will call to order the Monday, January 13th meeting of the Verona Common Council. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, please.
Alderperson Bear?
Here.
Alderperson Diaz?
Here.
Alderperson Doyle?
Here.
Alderperson Manley?
Here.
Alderperson Ricky?
Here.
Alderperson Steiner?
Here.
And Alderperson Years?
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery is absent and excused this evening.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. At this point, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on the, on anything that is not on the agenda? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Going to third and final time, anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move on then with the agenda. Next, we have approval of minutes from the December 9th and the December 19th meeting of the common councils. The minutes were included with your packet, and what's your pleasure?
Move approval of both.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of both of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, we have two items this evening. The first one is, and everyone from the council is welcome, it is Wednesday, is that correct? Wednesday at 10 o'clock in the morning, at the fifth quarter, there's going to be a recognition for the school crossing guards. So if you can make it, you are more than welcome to do so. And we will be presenting this proclamation. It's a proclamation on adult school crossing guard recognition. Whereas Verona's adult school crossing guards provide an individual service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, that is, the children walking between home and school. And whereas adult school crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts, and heavy traffic. And whereas for more than four decades, adult school crossing guards have served the community, the Verona community. And whereas adult school crossing guards add to the effectiveness of the student safety patrol members with whom they often serve and whose activity they help direct. Whereas adult school crossing guards help to reinforce in the minds of young people that they assist, the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. And whereas school assemblies, school board resolutions, police department support, parent-teacher organization observances, local news coverage, and especially kind words from children help convey the gratitude of our community for the lifesaving, injury-reducing role that Verona's adult school crossing guards play. Now therefore, I, John Holcomer, Mayor of the City of Verona, do hereby proclaim January 13 through January 17, 2014, as school, adult school crossing guard recognition week in the City of Verona, and I invite all the citizens to join me in this recognition. And the proclamation would be signed today, January 13, 2014. I can tell you that over the years, I've heard some interesting stories from the adult school crossing guards, that, just the conversations that they have with, with some of the kids. It's really pretty neat. And in some cases, stories about how they may be the only either father figure or mother figure in their life that, that they feel comfortable talking to. It's just, again, over the years, I've heard some amazing stories, and perhaps if you get a chance to go to the recognition, you'll hear some of those stories as well. So we certainly want to thank our adult school crossing guards for the job that they do, protecting the kids and watching out for the traffic. I was thinking about it today as I was driving, I was in the West Bend area, and watching people that were shaving while they were driving, drinking coffee, doing a number of things, talking on cellphones, tons of people. So they're out there every day, and they're, and the adult school crossing guards are dealing with that issue as well. So we certainly do want to thank them for their, their service. And then the second thing is, I would ask for your confirmation of an additional appointment to the Public Safety Ad Hoc Committee. We've had a resident of the City of Verona express an interest in serving. He has a lot of expertise. So at the last meeting, he was there, he attended, but he was not officially appointed to the task force. That individual is Tim Holman. Some of you may know him. Tim grew up in North Platte, Nebraska. He graduated from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. He worked in a number of states in that profession, including Idaho, Illinois, Alaska, California, Nevada, and Wisconsin. And he's been in Verona since 1993. Tim is the owner of Holman Construction Company. He's got over 35 years of experience with projects that he oversaw, over $1.15 billion for a number of different owners. He holds his civil engineering licenses both in Wisconsin and in California. Where I got to know Tim, and probably a lot of people in this city got to know Tim, is he was the founder and the president of the Verona Little League. So Tim really gets a lot of credit for, for the complex that we see out in the east part of the city. He's a tremendous man, he's got a tremendous family, have met his wife and his kids, and I'm excited to make the appointment, and I would ask for your confirmation of that appointment.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Steiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. All those in favor of that confirmation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, so we'll make sure that Tim gets that message. That concludes my report, so we will go to the administrative report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you. I have a few updates this evening. First, I wanted to report that the Verona Fire District has dissolved at the end of the year per the terms of the dissolution agreement agreed to between the city and town of Verona. The city fire department is operational, they are staffed, they are responding to calls. The city is continuing with the transition process, and there is a pending complaint that was filed by IAFF, Local 311, related to the staffing for the department. The city is currently operating under an order issued by Dane County Circuit Court, and a couple key dates coming up in that matter is a hearing on a motion to dismiss that's taking place on January 17. And then assuming that that is not approved and dismissed, the next step in the process would be a hearing on a potential summary judgment on the matter on February 19 of 2014. As the mayor had indicated, the ad hoc committee has been meeting to work on the fire and EMS facility design. The last meeting took place on January the 7th, and at that meeting, members of the committee reviewed schematic design, preliminary elevations, preliminary renderings for the project, and some initial construction cost estimates. Staff is continuing to work with the architect and the construction engineer, or construction manager, on a refined project budget with some of the alternative bid pieces that they're potentially looking at. And we're hoping to get additional information on the schematic design and a project cost estimate ready to come to the city council either later in January or early in February. The city is planning to hold a committee of the whole meeting on Monday, January 20th. Topics for that meeting would include discussion about the process for the north neighborhood plan, an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Madison, and a request from the town of Verona to discuss boundary agreements. The tentative time for that meeting was 6:00 PM. I have had a request from one alder to consider a later start time, so I did want to raise that for the group tonight, see if the group would prefer to meet at 6:00, or it was suggested looking at a 6:30 or 7:00 o'clock time.
Either's fine with me. Preference from the council?
I just prefer 7:00 PM, just because that's when the council meets, and I like the consistency.
Doesn't matter. What's, what's the preference of the council? Doesn't matter to me at all.
Yeah, 7:00 is fine with me.
Okay, 7:00 o'clock, 7:00 it is.
Okay, and then one additional update I have this evening. The draft of the downtown study plan has been completed, and that is out on the city's website. Under News and Events, there's a link to the materials for that study. There will be a public hearing and presentation for the Plan Commission that'll take place on February 3 at 6:30 PM. Public is certainly welcome to attend that and provide comments. People can also send comments to city staff, direct those to the city planner, and we'll share feedback with the Plan Commission. We will also be bringing that plan to the city council following the meeting with the Plan Commission in February. And I'd be available for any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Years, please.
Speaking of the committee of the whole meeting next Monday, there's been discussion on this in the past, will that be recorded?
Yes, we are planning to record that meeting.
Mr. Steiner?
Is our meeting tomorrow for the director of the senior center start at 1:30?
Yes, that's correct. There is a personnel committee meeting that would start at 1:30 PM for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the senior center director position, and there are additional people on the interview panel as well that have been invited to that. So yes, 1:30 PM tomorrow is the start time.
Mr. Steiner?
And our senior commission meeting is canceled tomorrow late afternoon due to this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Any other questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, thank you, Bill. We'll move on then to the engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock?
Thank you. This evening, I do not have a report. With the cold weather, there hasn't been a lot going on, other than a little bit of grading out at Epic.
Okay. I assume there's probably not any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Seeing none. Bob, thank you.
Welcome.
Next, we will move to committee reports. We'll begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Years, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-001, approving a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial entertainment use at 611 Hometown Circle, Suite Number 4.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bear. Mr. Years?
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit would allow Brew's Brothers Restaurant to occupy 2,130 square feet of space at 611 Hometown Circle. The restaurant is also proposing to use the Easternmost patio as an outdoor seating. For the Plan, the Plan Commission held the required public hearing on January 6, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. One, outdoor patio fencing shall be a minimum of 48 inches tall. Two, the exit for the patio shall be laid at exit only. And three, the fence and gate for the outdoor patio shall comply with the requirements from the police department and building inspector, and I would like those conditions to be placed on my original motion.
Okay. And Mr. Bear? Are there any questions, or Mr. Sayer, is there anything you needed to add? The only item that I would add on this issue, on this agenda item, and on the next agenda item, under the public hearings, there was no, there was no comment from anyone in the public that was available or attending that evening. Mr. Years?
On this and the next one, I just wanted to say that these were unanimous votes by the Plan Commission as well, and that for this particular item on the agenda, everyone in the Plan Commission seemed to think that the Brew's Brothers Restaurant was going to be a good addition, especially to this portion of the city, with it being in relationship to the other activities of Verona, such as the baseball diamonds and things of that nature.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-002, approving a conditional use permit for an indoor commercial entertainment use at 611 Hometown Circle, Suite Number 5.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manley. Mr. Years?
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit would allow Little Caesar's Pizza to occupy 1,500 square feet of space at 611 Hometown Circle, and utilize the drive-through as a pickup window. The drive-through was approved in September of 2013 by the Plan Commission and Common Council. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on January 6, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit. And I just wanted to, again, mention with the drive-through, there will be a sign there, but it won't be like a McDonald's menu board, you won't be able to order there. It'll just have placed on their hot and ready pizzas, so the ones you can just go right up and pick up without having to order.
You've heard the explanation. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Thank you. On this item, I'm going to defer to Mr. Sayer to give the overview.
Okay. Mr. Sayer, if you would, please.
Thank you. This is a conceptual review of the Hometown Grove Development, and this project is located immediately south of Glacier Edge School, along Kimball Lane. If you recall, this was actually before the Common Council in December, along with the Plan Commission. Went to the Plan Commission and Council, and a variety of comments were said at the council meeting, I guess I'll quickly summarize those. There were some concerns about the small garage sizes, limited on-street parking, the narrow streets, and the lot sizes in the development. In addition, the city police chief did express concerns about the right-of-way widths in this project. So based upon the feedback from both the Plan Commission and the Common Council in December, the applicant submitted three options, and then also provided a fourth option at the Plan Commission meeting. And I'll briefly, briefly go through those, those four options. Option A is a modification of what the Plan Commission actually, in the council, looked at initially in December. What it does is it still provides those alley-loaded houses along Kimball Lane. There would be a 52-foot wide, or excuse me, a 52-foot wide street as you would travel south, and then the houses in the next kind of block area, those would also be front-loaded as well. Those would be front-loaded. The ring road, as I would call it, around the perimeter of the site, the developer has increased the right-of-way of that to 56 feet wide, and that will accommodate a roadway that will be 32 feet curb-to-curb, along with five-foot sidewalks on each side and six-foot terraces. The 52-foot street in the middle that goes east-west, that would be 28 feet of roadway curb-to-curb, along with five-foot sidewalks on each side and six-foot terraces as well. The second option that was provided, that's option B, as in, as in boy. This option is similar to the last one, it has the, the alley-loaded garages along Kimball Lane, but the, the big difference in this one is there's actually a central court, or central park area that would have, have houses on it. And the houses fronting the, the park area would be, have alleys, and their garages would be loaded from the rear. One of the concerns with this option, from the Plan Commission and myself, was parking concerns for the, the houses that are located along that, that parkway. If, if a guest were to come over, or if family were staying there, parking could possibly be a challenge for those visitors, you know, visiting those homes. With this option, we'd have two alleyways. Once again, the ring road would be 56 feet wide, traversing the, the surrounding area of the property. And with all these options, once again, we would also, as we discussed in December, the existing Easternmost townhouse would be relocated behind the existing townhouses. Option C is actually a conventional layout. This option meets all the zoning requirements, it would meet all the setbacks. It also provides a 66-foot ride, right-of-way for the entire roadway in this project. And what a 66-foot wide right-of-way is, it's 36 feet curb-to-curb. You'd have five-foot sidewalks on each side and eight-foot terraces on, on each side. All the houses in this option would be front-loaded, they'd be, there'd be no alleyways, there'd just be garages facing the street. One of the, the concerns that, you know, I've raised with this option is, is what the look of this development would have along Kimball Lane. You know, right now, you have, you have these, these townhouses with steps going up to the, to the actual townhouse, and these, and these homes, and with this option, option C, you would lose that look. The homes would actually face towards that, that ring road that would surround the developments. So you wouldn't have the consistent look along Kimball Lane. You'd have the, you'd have the, the townhouses with the stairs going up, and then you'd have the homes right there, most likely with the, you'd be looking at the side of the home, and then you'd have apartments. So you'd have this really, I guess, varied kind of look along there. One of the things that I liked about the other options was you actually have that, that consistent look, that consistent theme along, along Kimball Lane. So just something, something to keep in mind. And finally, we have option D. This is what was presented to the Plan Commission last week. Option D is a, I guess, a hybrid of, of option A and also what you reviewed back in December. You'd have the, the homes along Kimball Lane would have alleys in the back, you'd have a 52-foot wide right-of-way beyond that, and then you'd have a smaller little area that have a park, a private park, another alleyway, once again, reloaded garages. And then the ring road surrounding it, those houses, it'll have traditional garages that would actually face the street, so it'd be front-loaded. This was more the, the, the design that the Plan Commission gravitated towards. I think the, the Plan Commission felt this would help preserve that, that look along Kimball Lane. You have the 56-foot wide road going around the, the outside, and with that 56-foot wide road, parking on that in the summer would be on both sides, but in the, in the winter, we would restrict it. So winter parking in this area for snow storage, you'd have parking alternating either by even odd days or just limiting it to one side. But it would be restricted in some fashion to help accommodate that, that snow storage and, and on-street parking. So with, with that, like I said, the Plan Commission in general was supportive of, of option D. I know the developers are here tonight, and they're, I'm sure they want to, might want to add a few things, but they're more than happy to, to answer your questions. And the intent of this, this is still the concept review, this is still step two, so there is no vote on this, but it's a chance for you to provide the developer feedback and just, and ask them questions and engage, engage them in conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Are there any questions for Mr. Sayer at this point? Mr. Steiner?
So Sayer, was there discussion on who is removing the snow from the alleys?
Mr. Sayer?
The alleys would be private outlots, so that would be maintained by the homeowners, homeowners association. So when they would actually plat this out, they would actually have to create a homeowners association, have the, have a private contractor of some type remove it. So that would not be the responsibility of the city, but it would be the responsibility of the, the development itself.
Thank you. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, could you, could you talk a little bit about some of the concerns that were expressed with respect to public safety and emergency vehicles? I'm thinking, and I'm thinking about particularly in the winter, with some of the narrower streets in the city, we've had complaints about difficulty getting fire trucks able to navigate, even when we do restrict parking to only one side of the street, as has been proposed. So I, I'm wondering if, if you could talk a little bit about what those issues, what issues were identified, and what challenges there may be with having streets narrower than, than the typical street section that we use for new developments in the city.
Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, this, this was something we talked about at, at the last meeting as well, looking at a fire truck in there, if there were an emergency, if they had to use the outriggers, and, and just trying to get a, get a truck in there if there, if there was an emergency. And, and one of the, you know, at the, at the last meeting in December, the roads are actually 52 feet wide, so that was 28 face-to-face with, with curbs. In response to kind of looking at that, and that concern, the, the curb area, the roadway itself, was expanded out to 32 feet of, of actual roadway. And, and part of that too, in the winter especially, is the intent of restricting that part, you know, the parking to one side is, you know, one, making sure there's enough roadway for cars to get by, but also accommodating any kind of, any kind of fire vehicles and that nature as well, too. So part of the increase in the width of itself was to, to provide additional space if a fire truck were to get down there. I'm not sure if Bob wants to add anything to that as well.
Mr. Gunlock?
Well, with a 32-foot street in the wintertime, you have to figure that you're going to lose two feet on each side for snow storage, so you're down to 28 feet. Now, if you've got a vehicle parked eight feet, so you're down to 20 feet, a fire truck can get past, can get through on a 20-foot wide street. I mean, they're going to get through. Outriggers, I think, on a fire truck go out about 18 feet. So they could get the outriggers out if they got, if they're using the, the ladder truck. There's a lot of 32, 32-foot streets that have been constructed in, in this area. This is a small, a small subdivision area. Even with the townhouses or condos in there, I think there's a total of about, at the most, 57, 57 units. Total traffic volume over the whole day in that area should not be more than about 550 to 600 vehicles. So you've got a couple of vehicle trips an hour, and in the morning, you might have, peak hour, you might have 50 vehicle trips in that area. So, I mean, it's a, it's a low-volume area. If you're going to have traditional neighborhood development, you're going to want, you know, you generally want to decrease the street size. So I, I mean, in this area, I don't, I don't feel that a 32-foot street is going to hinder public safety. That's my opinion. The police chief would have a different opinion.
Mr. Years?
Excuse me. I guess I, I understand that there, in a perfect world, there would be enough room. You know, my concern is when people park where they're not supposed to, which happens all the time. There's people who, on my side, where I live, every morning, there's somebody with a parking ticket every day. There's people parked on both sides of the street, and, and I guess, I want to be, make sure we're prepared for the worst-case scenario as well, which kind of makes me worry about the, with the street in, in option D, which is, other than, other than C, I'd support. And then also in option D, where I have some issue, are the privately-owned alleyways. Verona Police would not have any jurisdiction over those roads if, you know, someone were parked somewhere where their neighbor didn't want them to be, or, you know, things of that nature. We wouldn't have jurisdiction there either, and so those make me a little, a little nervous as well. And so I'm, I, to be completely honest, I'm wavering back and forth of whether I want to support option D, or if I want to support option C. I want to support this project at the end of the day, because I think it does bring to Verona a housing stock that I think we need. And so it's, I'm looking forward to hearing what some of the other alders have to say tonight.
Any other questions at this point for Mr. Sayer? If not, Mr. Beal, did you want to make some comments?
First of all, thank you for taking the time to, again, evaluate this in the, the concept approval, and that's exactly what we wanted to have done, is have you guys take a look at this thing, because as you may know, from this stage on, it goes into quite a bit of detail in order to prepare a GDP and give you all of the specifics. To answer your question, Mr. Manley, we thought and discussed that same thing about the emergency vehicles, particularly a fire truck that has extended outriggers on it. One, one thing that we came up with that we realized, and I just will point it out, is that on the west side of this coming into the lane, next to the townhouse areas, there really isn't any parking or any drive, or side yards, or really any parking along that, because those are serviced by, they're actually parking lots. And that would, that would provide an adequate amount of snow storage along that section, which fronts the, the zero-lot line townhouses. As you come up to a little farther into the perimeter, where we have front-loaded homes, each one of those homes is going to have a minimum of a 17-foot wide driveway. And when you look at the lots that are 60 feet wide, that says that every 60 feet minimum, there'll be a driveway that will be cleared. So even in a worse situation, when there's a snow, if, if a truck does have to come into that area and has to set up riggers, every 60 feet, there's a, there's an expanded area there that he could pull into. He can certainly get to, to the spot because of the, the distance of the road, but if there's a problem with an outrigger, he could set up right in a, in a driveway area and be able to service almost everything there. So I think that if you look at that as a service area for, for firefighting itself, I think we can cover that, just by the nature of the construction of the, of the driveways. I think that makes, you know, good sense. It certainly, also, I think, like to point out that the help that we've had- It certainly, also, I think, like to point out that the help that we've had on this has come from Denofrio Kotke. They actually were instrumental in looking at all four of these options with us, and Denofrio Kotke has been instrumental in the engineering design of all of the TND neighborhoods in our surrounding area. They developed Smith Crossing out in, in Sun Prairie. They did Linden Park here on the other side of town. They were instrumental, I think, over in the, in the Middleton area, and they were involved in, I, I can't remember the name of it, out on Cottage Grove Road, but that was a big traditional neighborhood design. So, we have had them looking at each one of this, and this is a relatively small area. It's a difficult little tract of land to be able to make work and function, and that's why there really wasn't another option, other than to have what we call the ring road, to be able to access this. There will be a neighborhood development committee, just a, or a neighborhood homeowners association, just as there is in, in the other traditional neighborhood designs. They're responsible for a, a, a small amount of, of annual dues or monthly dues, and that is there to be able to support the snow removal and, and the maintenance of the streets, the maintenance of the lighting, the street lighting. We're planning on a decorative light, instead of just the traditional light that the city has, so we were told that we're going to be responsible for the maintenance of those, not the power, but the maintenance of those lights. So, that's, oh, and also the maintenance of the park, okay? I did, because Heather had requested that I look into whether or not we could consider a neighborhood association being able to provide lawn care service for the entire development, and also snow removal service. And I did find one, that's Hawks', let's see, Hawks Ridge on Forward Avenue. No, what is the, the frontage in front of Outback Steakhouse and UW, in front of Target in Madison? I keep forgetting the name.
Junction.
Junction Road, Junction Road. That development was, was developed in the late 90s. It was intended to be a rental community, and it's now a, a traditional neighborhood design with individual homes, and they actually do have a, a master contract administered by the homeowners association for land, or for lawn care work and snow removal work. It's fairly expensive. They charge $165 a month per owner in that development to handle their homeowners association. I did talk to some develop, some developers, and also the realtors that would possibly be moving these, and they suggested that we didn't make that a stipulation in the additional offer, or initial offering, because they felt like, well, we're trying to provide affordable housing in this case, and in the banking industry, you would be pre-qualified, and usually a young couple or an older couple would be pre-qualified for a certain size of home, and if there is a stipulation that there's a, an association dues, that comes directly off of the amount of money that they can spend for that home, which would restrict people from being able to own, possibly own a home. However, I think it's a good idea that, once we develop this, and as a declarant, we will, we will be turning this association over to the homeowners association. It would certainly be something that the individual homeowners association could certainly take a look at, and in that case, there would, there would be vote of the people who own those communities, and they could certainly do that, and the documents that I have for homeowners association certainly allows for them to amend that for the services they'd like to provide. So, I think at this time, what we'd like to lean towards is, is to be able to, say, offer that service, however defer that to the vote of an existing homeowners association.
Okay. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You actually, you brought up the, the development that's on the west side of Junction Road, across from the UW Health West Clinic.
Right.
And in the, in the area of the Outback Steakhouse. I was actually going to bring that development up, as well as the, on the, on the north end of, or the north side of Highway PD, in between Murfield and, and Silverton, there's also a, a number of little cul-de-sacs with, with very small, I'm guessing, traditional neighborhood design, but they're, they're incredibly small homes on, on very small lots. And my concern is that in both of those instances, you essentially have what I would describe as cookie cutter tract homes, and it's really a, you know, maybe that's great for Madison, and, and maybe that works for their city, and, and maybe that's the kind of housing that they want there. But I think one of the things that's drawn people to, to Verona is a differentiation between our city and Madison. And, and having a distinct character in our city versus Madison. And I, I'm, I'm concerned that we would end up with similar type of development in, in Verona, where we, you know, are squeezing a, a bunch of these tract homes into a, a small development. And I, my, my biggest concern and why I'm leaning toward option C is that I, I don't want to see that happen. I want to make sure that Verona is able to preserve its, its identity and, and have a character all of its own.
I understand what you're saying. I think in the Junction Road situation, that that community was actually developed as a rental community, so the Haynes actually developed that thing with the intent to rent them. They were, they, and they are small, and I think the same developer, in fact, I had built some, some duplex lots not too far from there, and the same development team built all of those. And you're right, those were, those were all cookie cutter developed, built. I think there may be four or five different designs in there, and they just move them around a little bit. It's our intention that, that this development is going to be open to lot purchasers, with no restriction on the contractor that they would build for these homes. And in the GDP, we intend to be able to put in building restrictions so that different developers and different owners have the ability to put their own, I guess, designs into these places. They will not be a traditional, just one type of individual like, like a condo community. There will, I anticipate this, however, they will have to be restricted by the size of the lot and the fact that they're going to be rear-loaded, and they will have to adhere to a traditional neighborhood design, which is a front, a front porch, intended to, to encourage, you know, community involvement, friendly people walking up and down the sidewalks, trying to de-emphasize automobile traffic and, and encourage more people walking, and that's why you've got an interior park, and we've got dry sidewalks on both sides of the streets. The lot sizes are really not restrictive. We've done several different designs, in fact, not just several, but many, showing that there's, there's plenty of choices out there for people to put, I'm saying smaller homes, I'm probably, the, the footprint would be under 2500 or 1500 feet on a, on a, say, a ranch first level, and that's not particularly a real small lot. It's not like an eight or 900 feet. But I think this development would definitely give plenty of, of choice to people, individuals to come into there, purchase a lot, and build something on it and bring their own developer. Now, my understanding is that there really is no other place in the city of Verona that people have the choice to buy a lot and to be able to bring another contractor, their own contractor in to build. And, and we, we anticipate this to be a development that we will open up. So, I think that with that ability to do that, it's going to take away the, I guess, tendency to create a cookie cutter type design. So, I guess.
I guess I'd like to add to that, that if we-
Steve Sunstrom, president of Apex Building Repair.
If, if we end up doing option D, it's a planned unit development, in which case we can, we can incorporate architectural language into the GDP that will allow for Verona to kind of ensure that we don't end up with some sort of cookie cutter tract housing. We can, we can put features that, that are desirable, and, and I'd also like to go back to, you raised concerns about people parking illegally and causing public safety problems. That's one of the reasons we went to a 56-foot right-of-way, was so that we could have parking on both sides of the street, on the, on the outer circle, so that there wouldn't be an issue of, you know, the people parking on the side of the street that they're not supposed to be parking on, therefore reducing the, the drive width to a point where it is an encumbrance on fire trucks. So, we've, and as Mr. Gundlach says, the, even with taking into consideration vehicles on both sides, in winter, there still should be enough room to safely navigate a fire truck. And then the, the third thing, as far as enforcing parking in the, in the private alleys, it's, I guess if someone in Madison, we have the, the ability to call on law enforcement to specifically request that they come out and ticket. So, I, I assume it's the same in Verona, I, I guess. There's no ability to do-
Mr. Gundlach?
Private, private areas, the police chief, the police department has no authority to ticket those vehicles.
Does the, do residents have the authority then to, to tow illegally, to hire a, like a homeowners association if they, could they pay to have vehicles towed off of the private outlots, the alleyways?
The homeowners association may be able to do it.
Okay. So, we, I don't think we'd end up with a situation where, you know, you'd have people parking, blocking the, the private alleys. I think it could be addressed that way. That's, that's all I wanted to add.
It really is our intention and our, I guess, choice to be able to develop this property in the design of a traditional neighborhood design, because the, the townhouses that are there at the moment, it's a, it really is a, I guess, an indication of the, the traditional neighborhood design, and to us, to change that really wouldn't, wouldn't be in our best interest. We really would like to have the opportunity to create this as a traditional neighborhood design. There is nothing in the, in the Verona, immediate Verona area that, that has that. I think this is perfect for that. A traditional neighborhood design by definition says that it's designed for the person who is able to get to services within a five-minute walk, and we certainly have that here. You've got a beautiful school across the street. You've got playgrounds and areas that the kids can, that live in this neighborhood can walk across Kimball and be able to utilize that. Down the street, you've got a quick-trip type of place, you've got a gas station, you've got a Graze Tide House, you've got a daycare across the street from that. Really, this little area in this, in this part of your city is perfect for a traditional neighborhood design, and we'd like to continue to keep it that way.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Ricky?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, thank you for researching that idea. My main goal with that was to avoid people needing to park maintenance, you know, like yard maintenance vehicles in their garage instead of their cars, and so to, to kind of do away with the concern about not having enough parking in people's garages and driveways, and that they'd be parking on the street, is one way to do that, is to not have to store big items in your garage like lawnmowers and snow blowers. So, I guess I was picturing it as more of like an idea where people would know coming into this neighborhood that if they build there, this would be what they're getting into, and it may be a lifestyle change for some people who are, you know, used to taking care of their own yards, but it also, and, you know, people who don't want to take care of yards anymore, or people who work 80 hours a week at Epic and don't have time, or have young children, and, you know, would like someone else to do that sort of thing. That was kind of my thought process, was to alleviate the-
I think, I think it's a good observation. It's, I'm, I'm thinking of, it, it might be restrictive in, in the interim, in the beginning of the development is all, just because-
Yeah, that's-
And I'm not saying $165 is, is the magic number. I mean, we could possibly provide less than that, but there will be some sort of a fee, a monthly fee, to maintain the roads, and, and I'd, I'd like not to have to, you know, build on that and, and make that, I don't know if $100 a month is restrictive or not, but we're trying to keep it below that.
Yeah, and I, I don't know either, because it seems like if a ranch is 1,500 square feet, you said, then a two-story would be 3,000 square feet. That's, that's bigger than my house, which is just down the road from this development. So, to me, that's not smaller homes. And so, to get in that lower price range, I would think the houses would need to be smaller to begin with.
I think some of the, the two-story that we designed was about 900 square feet, and maybe 800 on the top. So, you know, it, it'll vary quite, quite, quite a bit. I mean, there, there's definitely going to be some different type of designs that, that will, you know, pop up in this neighborhood.
The, the two-story would likely have a smaller footprint, so you're going to have, you know, more square footage than the ranch, but not necessarily double the ranch.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Diaz?
I just kind of want to repeat what I said last time. I really like, like the vision, and I know it's a tricky spot to develop, and I know this isn't the first, the first try. My main concerns are the same with that, that emergency vehicles can get through. I mean, that's, that's really the only concern I have with any of these, and, and from what I'm hearing, is that the, the way the roads are designed, that would take care of it. So, I'm, I'm supportive generally of, of all the, all the plans, and I think you should pick, pick whichever one best serves your, your business needs or what the market's asking for.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Bear?
I just want to clarify that the, the sort of crossroad in the middle has a 52-foot width, is that right, on, on option D?
That's correct.
Okay, so 52 wouldn't fit into what Mr. Gundlach is saying for-
No, that, that would be a single car.
Okay.
Yeah, that we would still have to enforce the one-sided parking on that street.
And there's still, I, you know, I would still share the concern that Mr. Years brought up, that as, as good as enforcers as we have, you're still going to have people that break the law and, and park on the wrong side, and you don't want that to be the one night where you need that side of the street to get the fire truck and its outriggers out. So, I, I would be a lot more comfortable with this if that was also 56 feet, just to help with that concern, to have 56 all around in the neighborhood. I, you know, I don't know if you can make that work in your plans, but, you know, I think you're good at drawing lines and, and can hopefully figure that out for us.
We can pose that question to Denofrio Kotke, and I, you know, the, the sacrifice, obviously if that gets bigger, something else gets smaller, and we'd be having to, to crunch down the, the length of the, the back-fed lots there. So, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, whether the width of that street is more important than maintaining the, the area of the lots, I guess. Does anyone have an opinion they want to?
Mr. Years?
Well, my comment was, wasn't to that, but I guess I would say that the potential safety of the residents of that home, I guess, are more important than the size of their lot. I mean, I think that's a no-brainer. My question really was going to get at actually what Commissioner Lidle brought up at the Plan Commission meeting. On that center road, and Mr. Gundlach might be able to talk about this too, have, have you looked at changing that so it's not that right-angle turn, and how that would change the lots?
I don't know. That was the, the private alley in the, the upper island.
Oh, it was a private alley?
And that, that has been changed. I don't know if you have the most recent version.
Yep.
Okay. It's sort of radiused now, a gradual radius there.
And, Mr. Gundlach, does that- And, Mr. Gundlach, does that fit?
I looked at a 45-degree angle on that alley and a garbage truck, there is enough width to get a garbage truck both into the alley and through the alley and out of it. And a fire truck would be the same thing. A fire truck could get through there.
I guess that, that would make me, the alleys for that center road, if we had to do the one-sided parking, if there was the off-chance that we had a fire at the same time somebody was parking on the wrong side of the street, they also have alleys behind them that are wide enough for a fire truck. So, we have a sort of a backup built in there.
Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I, part of the reason why I think Design C makes the most sense is that you don't have to worry about questions about alleys and garbage trucks and fire trucks and whether or not we want to force people to have to pay for their lawn care and snow removal, or we can let people make that decision for themselves. But if you decide, or if we as a body decide, that we want to go with Option D, and it sounds to me like it's kind of a question between whether or not you go with C or D, I do like Mr. Bear's suggestion about widening that interior road to 56 feet to ensure that, you know, we do everything we can to make it passable for emergency vehicles. And just looking at your, your drawing, it looks like those lots that have frontage along or are adjacent to Kimball Lane, if I can read it, it's pretty small, but it looks like it's lots 31 through 35, maybe?
Correct.
If you wanted to make up four feet anywhere, it looks like some of those deeper lots would be an area where you could, you could potentially get some savings. But again, I think Option C would be my, my preference.
Other comments, questions?
As I had indicated at the Plan Commission, I would prefer the size of the lots in Option C, but we can't get everything that we want here. So, I'm leaning more towards Option D. I agree with trying to make that center thorough, fair, wider, if you could. And I do see in the packet here that you changed where you had the right angle. It's now coming out there at the 45. That's much better. So, I think, overall, again, for the, for the appearance of what the final project would look like, I prefer D, except that, again, I wish it was a little bit larger lots. And it's not that big of a development that I think if we were going to try something like this, this is, this is an area where we could do it. It's not that big of a project.
Right now, I think the minimum, the minimum size lot in this development is 4,000 feet or 4,050 feet. I think it's in my write-up, and I could look through it, but I believe it's there. I suppose if, we could make that work, I think, if we would take, instead of an 85-foot deep lot, if, say, we took it, made it 83, let's see, 83 from three different sections, would give a six, and that would make it work. So, we could do that. It's a little smaller, but it's, I think two feet would probably allow you to have more accessibility. Does that make sense?
Mr. Years?
Also, going back to our Plan Commission, when we talked about this at the last one, between Plans A and D, where lots 19 through 23 are, there is a lot added to make that five instead of four, and that was done to make sure that those other lot lines would line up. And with the repositioning of the alleyway, once again, you don't have those lining up. So, would that be a potential spot where you could save some space and remove Lot 19?
They do line up still.
No, they, they do line up. And you might not be able to see that, but it is intended that 19 lines up with 28 and so on. So, those five do line up. The only way that, I mean, if we, if we need to widen that center road, the width of those lots are all the same. And I think it's our feeling that we want to keep them as much the same as possible. But the length would be the only thing that we'd need to change to make a difference, to give you the, to give you that road.
And it does afford us the opportunity to do somewhat more variety in the cost of the housing available in the neighborhood and to have some smaller lots and some less smaller lots.
Other thoughts? Again, we're not taking any action here this evening.
We would certainly appreciate as much action or much direction as you can get us, because the next time we'll come in front of you will be with the GDP, and we don't want to, we'd like to have you guys be as much a part of this and feel as comfortable. All of the little, the little intricacies of this development will be, will be addressed in the GDP. And when we come back, there'll be a preliminary plat designed, which is very close to the final plat, so you'll be able to see radiuses. And we'll include the actual 56-foot right-of-way. It'll show the sidewalks. It'll show the terraces. It'll show the street that's there. So, you'll get a much better idea rather than a concept line drawing like this. And that's, it's considerable work to be able to do that. We just can't afford to, you know, have two or three different preliminary plats to come. So, we appreciate whatever you guys can give us.
Mr. Bear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank you guys for being flexible and open to our suggestions. I think this has been a good, good process for you and for us to be able to talk about this honestly and get all of our concerns on the table and work together on it. So, I want to thank you for that. And you're right that it is a desirable part of the city that we should be developing. It's, I don't want to say it's an eyesore right now, but it's a, you know, an empty field of grass with a couple of piles of dirt. So, this will certainly be an improvement over what's there today. And it is a market, at least Option D, I think, is a market that at least I've heard people are looking for in Verona. So, I want to thank you for doing that as well.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Not seeing any. So, we look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Years, is there anything else from the Plan Commission?
Nothing further.
All right, thank you. We'll move then to Finance Committee. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $1,232,116.77.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. This actually is the bills from late December and early January, because we only had the one official council meeting. The largest expenses from, from both periods were a bill in the amount of $338,939.34 for the Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District, $180,725.57 for our 2014 payment to the Fitch Verona EMS, and an $89,493 bill to the Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company for our 2014 insurance premiums.
You've heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee or for city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $1,232,116.70. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. Under Item 9B2, I'll make a motion to authorize the city to rescind 2013 property taxes for the property at 513 West Verona Avenue, which is St. Vincent de Paul, due to a palpable error, as is allowed under Section 74.33 Sub 1 Sub C of the Wisconsin statutes.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Manley?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think we all know and are familiar with the St. Vincent de Paul organization, and they are a nonprofit tax-exempt entity. And there was a mistake in the property tax billing that resulted in them being billed property taxes for 2013. And the Finance Committee unanimously recommend that we rescind that tax bill as we are allowed to do under statute.
Are there questions from the common council for either the Finance Committee or city staff? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-3 Designating Public Depositories and Authorizing Financial Signatures for the City of Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. This is pro forma, and it's something we do every year. We pass a resolution that designates the places where we, the financial institutions where we deposit money, and we list those staff persons who are authorized to sign checks.
You've heard the explanation. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley, anything else from Finance?
Nothing further.
Thank you. We'll move then to Old Business. Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I'll speak to both Items 1 and 2 under Old Business. Back in October of 2013, the city council passed two resolutions approving lease agreements with U.S. Cellular. One of those was for the location of a combination light pole and cellular antenna at Stompel Field, and the other was to allow the placement of antennas on the city's North Water Tower. As the city attorney and the attorneys for U.S. Cellular were working on finalizing the exhibits for these documents and working on the details of the easements, the attorneys for U.S. Cellular did request, require some modifications to the language in the lease agreement as it relates to the easements. City staff and the city attorney have been working with U.S. Cellular to finalize those details, and the changes are summarized in your packet. They primarily relate to specifying the location of the access easements, clarifying the rights of the parties in the city to modify the location of those easements. Probably the most significant change in the lease would be a provision that would state that all the, though the city can move those access easements at any time, as long as we're providing reasonable access, that it would cap the amount of times that U.S. Cellular would be required to pay to relocate any of their utility facilities within those easements due to a move. And as it's proposed, that would cap that at two times for each site. In discussing that with city staff, with the Public Works Director and City Engineer, we do not anticipate circumstances where we would have to move those any more than once. There is one for the water tower site where, when future development goes in, there's the possibility that we would want to relocate that to tie into the road network there. But we don't see the potential to move them even twice or more than twice. So, staff was comfortable with that limitation, and U.S. Cellular was just looking for some assurance that there wouldn't be an unreasonable number of moves that they'd be required to pay for. So, included in your packet are the final versions of these documents, along with the exhibits, which include the legal descriptions and the location of those easements. And staff is recommending reapproval of those agreements with the modifications.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Are there any questions or any potential motions at this point? Mr. Manley?
I'm prepared to move reapproval of the lease agreements, and I just wonder if you need separate motions for each of them?
Separate.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion first then to reapprove the lease agreement with Madison Cellular Telephone Company for a light pole slash antenna at Stompel Field.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bear. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. Then I'll make a motion to reapprove the lease agreement with Madison Cellular Telephone Company for the location of antennas on the city's North Water Tower.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bear. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are now to New Business. We have approval of operator licenses this evening. Ms. Schofield, please.
We have two licenses to approve this evening from Lilian Zengler at Pasquales and Alexander Nolan at the Wisconsin Brewing Company.
Any potential motions? Mr. Bear?
I'll move to approve licenses.
We have a motion by Mr. Bear, seconded by Mr. Manley. All those in favor of the approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, and the operators' licenses have been approved. We are on to announcements. Mr. Steiner?
Our Verona Historical Society will be meeting this Wednesday, the 15th, at the Senior Center at 3:00 PM to continue our discussions of the old schools around the area. So, if you want to be entertained for an hour, come on down. And 3:00 PM, our Verona Area Community Theater continues their production this week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Information online at VACT.org or 845-VACT. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other announcements this evening? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So, moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Years. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.